Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. I am echoing. In compliance with state law, city councils, special and regular meetings with will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis here. Councilmember Porter here. Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Harthausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simone.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
Have a forum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista, and just for everybody to know that Debbie, this councilmember Hartsock is joining us online. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes tonight.
Thank you. Look for approval of the agenda.
So moved second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next is reports of commission. First up is Economic Development Council. Josh, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. A quick update for each night. Uh, CEDIS has been busy with two, two pretty significant initiatives. Uh, you've heard me mention in the past, our business-to-business initiative. So we've, uh, divided up the, the commercial core. Uh, each CEDIS member is assigned to go out and speak to, uh, different businesses over the course of the month in between our meetings. Uh, and we've had three months of that activity now and have, we've received some good feedback. Um, on the positive side, most of our businesses are reporting that Covington is a fantastic market for them, especially businesses that do have additional locations in other cities, which is great. Um, what they enjoy is that this, the Covington consumer seems to be loyal, uh, to businesses in Covington. So, uh, we like to see that. Uh, if we're looking for any kind of feedback as to how we can improve, uh, commerce in Covington, there is one singular thing that comes up, and there's nothing even second to that or even close, and that's crime. Uh, and it's a big concern. Uh, and it, and when I say crime, we're talking about shoplifting. Uh, one of the biggest ones is people are worried, uh, business owners are worried about their customers, uh, having their cars broken into while they're, while they're in their businesses. Um, so it's, it's a very broad sense of what crime means to our business owners, but it's a really big deal. Um, so, uh, we are, of course, doing what we can on the CEDIS side. That kind of leads me to, um, well, first of all, we are asking the businesses, businesses to step up and do their part. We know that, um, through SEPTED principles, keeping our businesses clean, uh, free of graffiti, et cetera, uh, is really important. So we are asking each business that we visit and, and even more so, um, any of the businesses in our, in our general areas to sign what we're calling a clean pledge, uh, to meet us where, uh, we feel like the entire community is trying to step up and make a difference in terms of crime. So the clean pledge is a really basic, uh, kind of concept of keeping trash, uh, picked up, providing, um, public trash disposal spaces, uh, making sure graffiti is taken care of quickly on different properties, et cetera. Kind of like the example that Justin has set with this particular center. So, uh, we are asking for businesses to do their part as well. It's not just businesses complaining about us trying to, or the city trying to do something about crime. Um, another thing that CEDIS is working on that's going to help support this from, from kind of a grassroots side is we have spoken about the downtown association and the creation of such. That's proving to be a really difficult thing to get momentum on. So what we've done to get that started is develop a virtual downtown association. So basically a forum, uh, where we're inviting, uh, businesses to join a forum that allows us to create chat rooms, different types of communications, uh, ways to communicate, uh, if there, maybe there's things going on in certain sectors of the city that can be communicated to the other businesses so that they're aware and looking for those types of things. For example, uh, one of the first things that was posted on it, uh, more recently, uh, Justin posted some pictures of some known entities, uh, that in the city they're causing trouble. So now as a business community, we're all aware of that. So, um, in our business-to-business kind of track, we're taking little cards out to businesses and having them QR code them that instantly invites them into the, the virtual downtown association. And, and so we're hoping to really start to do a couple of things. The goals with that is to increase, just generally increase communication among businesses, which has not been really great, um, create a collective understanding of what's happening in the city. And then something we've talked a lot about, um, over the years is creating a sense of community among our businesses. So, so we're up to.
In a nutshell, can you say what some of the bigger challenges are for forming that, that downtown association? And, and if it's too much to say at a podium?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's really not that difficult at all. It's, um, it's, it's a rather large project in terms of getting a group of people to go in any direction and, and join a movement and create a movement, I guess, is kind of what we're trying to do. Um, and it's just, it's just a slow process, uh, especially for a group of people that have full-time jobs and all that jazz. So, um, we've started kind of the administrative work of establishing the entity that the downtown association will fall under, uh, which then the next step is to get enough funds to get a bank account, you know, and all that's in that kind of thing. So it's just a, it's just a slow process. And we're antsy, so this is kind of a way to bypass some of that and get going right away.
Sure. Thank you.
Josh, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
On our thing. It's been a while. So thanks to the entire economic development.
I will. We meet Thursday, so.
Okay.
Do so.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Next is our Covington Youth Council. Katie Lannister, welcome.
Good evening, Council. So what we've been up to is we recently had the Kentwood Club Rush and then the Kent Lake Volunteer Fair, where we really made an effort to try and recruit more applicants. Um, we also did get a new applicant, Isaac, who joined us last meeting last week. And he was a pleasure to be around. He's an underclassman, so that was really valuable to us. Um, we also attended Make a Difference Day. I don't know if you saw us there, but me and Silas were there as well. Um, next, we did some more talking with Chuck for our phone tree idea. That is mostly the Equity, um, Commission, but we were trying to start going door to door and see if we could get volunteers for that as well. And then, um, the Stock and Underwear Drive, which is Harshleen's Passion Project, one of our members started that around the Covington area at the Walmart in Front Meyer and stuff. That's going strong, and it'll keep going strong until the end of December. And then, um, lastly, we want to talk about trunk-or-treat at Kentwood. So that's gonna be on Halloween from five to seven. We would love to have some council members, some council members there. Um, we'll be in the city van, and Chuck will be there. I'll be in my Daphne costume. And that's again from five to seven. I can send more details as well. And our final thing was saying goodbye to Shelley, who's our adult member on there. So, that's all.
Thank you, Katie. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you for being there Saturday. Next is Arts Commission. Patty.
Good evening. Um, our last, our last meeting was shortly after a meeting that we had with the city council. So we basically did a big recap of the meeting, um, turning over the information, trying to see which ideas we're going to develop more, how things are working. We've got a plan in place to get working on some of the suggestions that we had from the council. Uh, we had a couple of meetings after that meeting with some other interested parties to clarify things. And, um, it was really interesting to find out that we had, our paths were crossing in a couple of different areas. So we are working on those projects, um, as well. So that was good. Uh, we did attend the Makers Market this last month. Well, a couple of weeks ago, actually. I was, I wasn't able to attend, but, um, we changed up our project a little bit where kids were actually looking and finding little farms around, around the market. I guess, pretty successful. It was fun. It was super hot, I heard. Um, that was, uh, maybe it affected the attendance. Some people had thought because it was so warm that day. Um, and lastly, we have, uh, set a date for our commission retreat where we plan to prioritize some of the things that were discussed at the, uh, at the joint meeting and develop the ideas even further, maybe come up with some new ideas of things that were suggested to us. That's it. Any questions?
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Next is Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice. Do we have anybody here? Human Services. Have anybody here from Human Services tonight? And Parks and Recreation, Laura.
Hello again. Um, thank you for your kind attention and thoughtful questions and interaction during the joint meeting that we had earlier. Um, it's always a pleasure to be able to talk about parks and to bring things forward to you. And so I just appreciate you listening to me a lot. Now you get to listen to me some more. I have three meetings to bring to you, and I'm gonna go through them pretty fast because we covered a lot at the joint meeting. Um, on August, in August, we met at the Aquatic Center. We got the aquatics update from Landon. Told us a lot of what we already know, what you already know, that the Aquatic Center is bursting at the seams, programs are full, et cetera, et cetera. We also got a tour of the Aquatic Center, which was really interesting for us as commission members because we, I personally have never been down into the bowels of the pool. And so I saw the, like, two-by-fours reinforcing the ceiling, and I saw the open vat where the chlorine gets mixed in. And, uh, it would make a great, like, haunted house type of thing. I got to walk next to the pool, and he's like, yeah, that's the side of the pool right there. Uh, so it was, it was interesting to see kind of the guts of the pool, and also interesting to see how the guts of the pool are just holding together. So that, uh, was, yeah, that was the bulk of our August meeting. Uh, in September, we, yeah, in September, we got an update from Jesse about parks maintenance. Again, a lot of that came up in the joint meeting. They're doing, uh, the best they can with what they have. Um, and then we also had the off, the off-leash dog park discussion, a lot of which also came up in the joint meeting. Uh, and then with maintenance, a couple of notes that I wrote down that, uh, one of the things that Jesse did say, they are, they've been contracting with a landscape maintenance company to help take care of some of the shrub beds in the parks around the city, which were completely overgrown in 2020. So again, they're like still trying to come back from 2020. Um, contracting is a struggle. It's was pretty iffy. Uh, apparently, there was a lot of internal turnover at that company. Jesse's hoping that it will improve, but it's not going as well as hoped. Uh, they have decided that they are just going to bark the shrub beds, especially the ones at CCP. If you've been there, you might have known that they were a little overgrown a couple of months ago, so they just want to bark them. But they need the landscape company to come and, like, remove all of the, the weeds and the blackberries first. Uh, they've done some pressure washing. The tennis courts got pressure washed. The picnic shelters at CCP got pressure washed. Uh, you may have heard us talking about a resurfacing project for the turf field at CCP. That has been pushed out till next year, but is still going to happen. Um, there, what they did do this year to save time was they used sod strips to repair the field because in soccer, people stand like goalies. They stand in the same place. The grass gets torn up, so you get these areas of sand. Previously, they would just seed it. Now, uh, to save some time, it's a little more expensive, but they're using sod strips, and that's actually worked really, really well. It's kind of that time-money trade-off. So, uh, this month, we had Ben Parish at our meeting. He was talking about the stormwater project that's happening in the wing, well, what they call the Wingfield Open Space, but it's kind of behind Kentwood in the Coho Development Area. There's a trail through there that floods pretty consistently every winter. In fact, if you look at the GIS map, you can see, like, the color changes where the trail floods because it is so consistent. And so I believe it's Little Sees Creek that runs through there. So they are doing some stormwater work there. But because that area functions kind of like a park, he brought it to our attention and for our input of some of the things that they're going to happen there. Most of the work is going to be done with stream bed restoration, but they do want to maintain the public access. They want to maintain the trail. Uh, so we talked about connectors into the various neighborhoods because that is, um, a spot where walkable connections between neighborhoods don't really exist. And so, again, like we mentioned in the joint meeting, anytime we can promote some type of walkability, some type of connection, we're all for that as the Parks Commission. And so redoing the trail in this area and possibly formalizing a trail to some of the easements. There's some bootleg trails now, but if we can possibly formalize some of those into the future, that will give access between the neighborhoods that are kind of up on the ridge behind Kentwood and then, um, you know, the neighborhood, Coho neighborhood that's down lower. And then again, anytime you formalize a trail, it kind of helps get rid of the nefarious elements and the people that are making bootleg trails behind people's backyards. So, all theoretical, nothing set in stone yet, but, um, restoration work is going to happen in that area. And interestingly, uh, this is one of those few times where the, lots of entities are very eager to participate and pool their resources because this Wingfield Open Space is very unusual in terms of a restoration project in that it's publicly accessible. A lot of restoration happens on private land. Um, so now these agencies can come in, they can do some restoration, and they can show it off to other people and say, hey, look what we could do for you. And so it's kind of a unique little benefit that this little parcel in our city has to offer. So, any possible questions that we didn't cover in an hour of meeting?
Laura, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next is Planning Commission. David, welcome.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, we had the following agenda topics for the last Planning Commission meeting on October nineteenth. The meeting was an exciting open house for the community where they could learn all about the comprehensive plan update, what it means for Covington, and to see how they can also help shape a thriving community for all. An excellent presentation on this topic was provided by the Covington Planning Staff, Burt Consulting, and the Planning Commission. After a Q and A session, we had almost a two-hour free-flow open house with storyboards and a positive information exchange. For this event, we had eighteen RSVPs. When it came time for the actual meeting, we had fourteen in-person attendees. Online, we had eleven hybrid attendees via Zoom, via Zoom, and we had ten streaming on Facebook. There was online Planning Commission participation to facilitate and answer all the open house discussion questions regarding the comp plan update. As we close this successful open house with our community members, let's carry that spirit of collaboration and optimism forward. Together, we really can achieve a great things for Covington. Kudos must be given to the excellent planning and organization efforts for this open house to the city planning staff. Our thanks to them for really being the driving force behind our successful open house. Considering we had thirty-five members, it was not too bad. I mean, I know we were looking for more like a hundred, but it's a very positive thing that we had that many people attend. We also had the opportunity to welcome our newest Planning Commission members, Stephen Bassem and Kenar Aronson. Looking forward to working with them. The commission activity planned outside of that regular commission meeting was the Planning Sub, Commission Subcommittee distributed the one thousand three hundred and sixty-four flyers to the seventy-five Covington businesses requesting their support in getting the word out and posting these flyers where they were visible for the local customers to see. The subcommittee effort took place the first week of October. Note that the flyers were in addition to our other standard Planning Commission meeting notifications on the city website and newsletter. Significant agenda items for the next Planning Commission meeting on November second is going to be a public hearing for the Docket Parks Element Amendments. And there's also going to be reviewing, a review of the draft comp plan elements, which include economic development and the work plan. Glad to provide you with this status update for the Planning Commission. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for David?
Thank you.
David, thank you very much. Have a great evening. That concludes our reports of commission. We do not have public communication tonight. So we'll move into our first of two public comment. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, but the public comment period is closed. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C six. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Next up is our first of three public hearings tonight. Today, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the two thousand twenty-four revenue sources and possible increase in property tax revenues. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance to a state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And Casey?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Let me just, uh, share here.
Okay, so before you tonight, we have a public hearing, um, that is required under state law to consider possible increases in property tax revenues and to review other revenue sources that support the city. And as much as I enjoy the numbers, I understand they may be a little dry for some, so I've made a PowerPoint this year, but I am more than happy to go through all the pages of revenue sources. If you have any questions, uh, what I've done this year is I'm just gonna hit the major operating funds, so the general fund, the street fund, swim fund, and development services fund, and kind of the major revenue sources within each of those funds. And then at the very end, I'll spend a little bit more time on property tax and just walk you through what the levy looks like this year. Um, but again, if you have any other questions on any other revenue sources. So the first revenue source, uh, that we'll be looking at is our property taxes, and these are kind of copied straight out of your revenue sources handout. But what you're just seeing in front of you now is just what our taxable assessed values are going to look like for next year as well as what our property tax levy rates look like for next year. And the way we kind of explain it is it kind of looks a little bit like a teeter totter. As you see the taxable assessed values go up, you see the levy rates go down. So we're only allowed to levy a certain dollar amount each year, so as our rates go up, the, or as our assessed value goes up, the rates go down, and then vice versa each year. So for next year, what we're looking at is our current levy is about three point two million. Our assessed value is just a little over four point one billion, and that includes fifteen million of new construction for next year. And our estimated levy is, um, seventy-seven cents per one thousand of assessed value. And you also see that you see a little bit of a drop between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four for our assessed value. It did go down seven point three percent. So the next major revenue source for the general fund is the sales taxes. And what this chart shows is our unrestricted sales tax revenue that we receive in the general fund. It's estimated at five point seven million for next year, which is just a little bit of a decrease, one point seven percent over twenty twenty-three estimated actuals. Uh, the restrict, we also have some restricted sales tax in the general fund. That's the HB fourteen oh six, which is currently being used for the low-income rent relief with, by Maple Place, as well for our skip dues and memberships that we pay them. And then we also have the HB fifteen ninety. It's about six hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, which can be used for the affordable housing, housing-related services, and behavioral health treatments. And that's also supporting Darren's, Darren's Community Care Navigator position, coordinator position, I believe. So that's what those funds are currently being used for. And I don't think I said how much the HB fourteen oh six is. It's about forty-five thousand dollars a year that we bring in for that. And so you can see for the sales taxes, I've got each category, retail, food services, contracting, and other, retail being our major category that we receive in our sales tax revenue. And then our forecast, we're just growing at, uh, have it about a five percent inflator in there, but we take a look at that each year, depending on what's going on in the market, things of that nature. So the next, uh, major revenue source is utility taxes. So we have electric, gas, solid waste, cable, telephone, storm drainage, cellular, and pager. And then we have two different rates. So all of our solid waste, our cable, and our storm drainage are all at eight percent, and the remaining are at six percent. And just as a little sidebar, we will also be reviewing water and sewer at the budget workshop, which is currently at zero. So our revenues for twenty twenty-four estimated just a little over two point six million. And they do fluctuate a little bit depending on rate changes from the utility companies. We kind of try to keep them with a little bit of a flatter growth rate because we just don't know usually ahead of time what those rate changes are gonna be prior to going into the budget season. Um, but it has been a really stable revenue source for us. And then just the general fund revenues, just in total, this is what the rest of everything looks like. So you can see taxes are seventy-seven percent of our total general fund revenues. The majority are taxes. We have licenses and permits, and those are things like, um, business licenses. Our intergovernmental are our state shared revenues or any grants that we receive from, uh, state, the county, federal. Uh, charges for goods and services are our user fees for aquatics, athletics, and recreation. And then we've got the point three is our fines and forfeitures that come in from the court. And then miscellaneous is, um, interest income, things of that nature. So then the next one to look at is the street funds. So the street funds, um, I'm gonna review three major revenue sources in that fund as well. So we have our TBD sales tax, which you'll know took effect July first of, um, this year. So for twenty twenty-three, I only show a partial year, and then after that is a full year and growing. And I'm growing it at the same rate as I'm doing the general fund sales tax as well, so it's growing at a rate of five percent. And then our next one is our vehicle license fees. These are kind of a little bit up and down. So I get these forecasts from the Department of Licensing. They only grow them at a rate of one point one percent. Our current vehicle count for next year is a little over eighteen thousand six hundred. So that's how many vehicles we show within Covington. Uh, and there are some vehicles that are exempt from it. You can think anything that has to do with farm equipment, off-road vehicles, snowmobiles, mopeds, which I thought was interesting, but motorcycles aren't. Um, they are not exempt. Uh, government vehicles, anything that's exempt to start with, things like that. So that, that just has a, a minor growth, and, you know, it stays relatively flat year over year. You can see, which I thought was interesting, is I thought I might see a little bit of a dip when COVID hit in twenty twenty, but we actually saw some growth. Where we did see a dip when COVID hit is the street fuel tax. So our street fuel taxes are a portion that we, we receive, um, from the state. And you can see in twenty nineteen, it, or twenty twenty, excuse me, it dropped when everybody was staying home. And it's remained relatively flat, I think, with just lifestyle changes and people working remote and things like that. So we haven't been up back up to those twenty nineteen levels yet. We've stayed pretty low. And so for the street fund, again, as a whole, uh, taxes make up the majority of it. And again, those are the new sales taxes that we have. Licenses and permits are the Comcast franchise fees and the vehicle license fees. Intergovernmental is the fuel tax, and then if there's any grants, um, in there, most of the grants for the streets are in CIP. And then miscellaneous, again, is just the interest income. And Development Services Fund. So for Development Services, I have to thank Selena for giving me lots of good information on this. So this one looks a little bit different than the other ones. Um, I've shown you categories by year, and you can really see how this, this, um, fund fluctuates, and I've overlaid it with, um, permits. So the, the line chart that you see are the number of permits per year. And then you can see what we're projecting for twenty-three and twenty-four. So this estimate for next year is based on sixty-three new single-family permits. Any anticipated commercial fees that we think will come in and any land use. Any anticipated commercial fees that we think will come in and any land use revenues. And staff, like I mentioned, Selena and Kelly, they meet with developers and they review all of their projected forecasts and really try to get a good handle. Of course, those things can change, but they they do meet with everybody and try to get a good handle to give us these forecasts. The other thing that I will mention is the inventory for a single family residential lots is currently really low, so we have about fifteen-ish in the pipeline that are currently buildable. With ninety-one more buildable lots hoping to come online by the end of the year. So this is why, or you'll see that, oh, I wanted to point out for twenty twenty-one, the reason there was a big spike is that's when Station by Vintage came in. So that was a big increase there. And then you can also see when I go to this next slide here, when I'm looking at everything in a whole, like charges for goods and services is plan reviews, mitigation fees, those type of things. And then licenses and permits is building permit. And you'll kind of see that flip flop from year to year because one year the building permit revenue will come in. Or the plan review will come in and then the next year, the building permit revenue will come in. So you'll kind of see those two categories just kind of do this throughout time. Fines and forfeitures, it's just minor late fees, that type of thing. And again, the miscellaneous is just interest income. Surface water management fund. Again, they only have a couple of really main revenue sources within the swim fund being one being the drainage utility that comes in that's charged on the property tax bills for folks. So twenty twenty-three is the last year of the adopted nine percent rate increases. So you'll see that it remains relatively flat for twenty twenty-three. I will mention that staff plans to bring back a COLA adjustment for twenty twenty-four in the twenty twenty-four fee resolution in November. And then next year, bring you back a rate study. So just look at all our options that would be affected for the twenty twenty-five levy. So then charges for goods and services, like I said, are the drainage utility fees. The orange, we get some small grants from time to time in the swim funds. And then the miscellaneous is interest. And that's pretty much their their big purple is their drainage utility fee, so that's their major revenue source. And then I just want to spend just a little bit more time on the property tax levy, just to walk you through that. Okay, let me make that a little bigger for you. Okay, is that big enough? Or do you need a little bit bigger? Second, okay. So you can see we have the, what we do is we start with the twenty twenty-three levy amount, so that's our current year's levy. We have three million one hundred and seventy-two thousand. We do our one percent, so our one percent that is included in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget is thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. We add our new construction, which is ten thousand six hundred and forty-three. And that gets us to our twenty twenty-four allowable property tax levy, which is the three point two million. As again, as I mentioned, the assessed value is just a little over four billion, so four point one five billion. Which makes our estimated levy rate for next year about seventy-seven cents. And then I just wanted to spend just a little bit more time on the the down below the the bottom part, just to show you that the home value for twenty twenty-three was seven hundred and fifty thousand in August last year. And then you can see how that seven point three percent decrease affects affected the home price for twenty twenty-four. It dropped down to six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Again, there's still an increase in tax assessment because of the one percent. And you can see that reflected in the one percent change there in the bottom of the graph also. So you have your assessed value, if you track that across the seven point three percent change, the one percent tax levy. And then the one percent tax assessment down at the bottom. And that is all I had for you. I'm happy to answer any questions after the hearing. And also, if possible, to provide some direction for the property tax ordinances that I'll be preparing in November. If you're leaning one way or the other about the one percent, that would be great.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington or not. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. And is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel on this topic? Anybody online? With that, I will declare this public hearing closed. Does counsel have any questions for Casey? On her presentation? Okay, does counsel, Casey asked for direction on which way, I mean, we're not voting on the one percent at this time, we're just providing direction if we wish Casey to bring back information that we are leaning one way or another on the one percent. Does counsel have any?
I'd just like to see the both directions, either we bank it or we go for it. I want to see both of those options because I know we banked last year, so.
I think we took it.
No, we didn't bank. Banked it two years ago, we banked it. And then we took it last year.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to see both the options.
I think we should take it every year, otherwise it catches up.
Because CPI this year is three point nine six percent. Last year was nine percent. Sean?
Don't hide, supporting, taking the one percent.
I'm leaning toward the one percent, but I think I always like having that option toward the end if there's a lead in that, just in case something pops up in the next two weeks, three weeks, whatever.
So the majority is to bring back the one percent. But not, this isn't a final vote, just to bring it back for us to look at in the November, because we're not voting on anything at this time anyway. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for that. Casey, thank you. Next up is our second public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the Puget, to regarding in ordinance, potential ordinance adopting the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority six-year capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine. Mitigation and level of service policy and amending the capital facilities and utilities element appendix and existing conditions report of the Covington Comprehensive Plan to include the same and adopt the two thousand twenty-four fire impact fee schedule. Selena?
Hi, good evening, counsel and mayor. Tonight, the public hearing that you have before you is, there'll be no action required by the council at the end of this. This is really for the public hearing and then any discussion of staff will be bringing this back to you in December. The reason for the delay on the decision tonight is we must go through the Department of Commerce's sixty-day review. So what you have before you tonight is related to the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority's capital program and associated impact fee. The Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority evaluates their plan every every year. And doing so, they look at what they need for capital and also what their level of service is. We adopt their plan by reference within our comprehensive plan. This this practice serves two purposes. First, our city engages in comprehensive planning, so therefore we rely on these services to provide services to the folks within our community. And the second reason is that we are legally adopted to, we are legally required to adopt their comprehensive plan. So what you have before you tonight is their their capital program and draft ordinance for adopting the impact fee. And after evaluating their capital program, we accept their findings that they remain concurrent with GMA requirements. Which essentially means that their services are evolving to meet the increased demand that we're seeing within Covington. That's consistent with our growth. And out of the capital program, what what occurs are what called are called impact fees. And impact fees are imposed on new developments to fund additional resources required to meet that growing demand for services and in this case, fire services. It's important to note that those impact fees are collected at the time of building permit. The case for that is that ultimately development pays for development. So when folks move into the home, that's when the impact is ultimately created. And if you want to dive into the details of their capital program, level of service, staffing resources, they kind of have a a calculation, and this is the same across all impact fees within the state. You have to show that you you are meeting that demand and if not, what is that, what is that delta there? And then then we establish that impact fee. So with that tonight, if there's any questions at the council, I'm happy to entertain that.
Okay. Thank you, Selena. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off. When your time is up, when the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel? Anybody online? Anybody wishing to address counsel? With that, I declare this public hearing closed. Does counsel have any questions for Selena? Yes, sir.
No.
Thank you, Selena.
No.
Appreciate it. Do you need any direction from us tonight or anything? Coming back to us in December?
Correct, mayor. This will be coming back to you in December, I believe, on consent agenda with a recommendation that the council approved the capital program as well as the adopted impact fees.
Great. Thank you very much. Next is our third public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding a possible ordinance, to consider an ordinance, adopting the Kent School District six-year capital facilities plan for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-eight to two thousand twenty-nine. And amending the capital facilities and utilities element appendix and existing conditions report of the Covington Comprehensive Plan to include the same and adopt the two thousand twenty-four Kent School District Impact Fee Schedule. With this being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, public hearing is hereby declared open. And Selena?
Good evening. This this second hearing is essentially the same process that we had for the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, except this is for the Kent School District. Again, the Kent School District updated its six-year capital program as they do year over year. We take that information, we adopt that into our comprehensive plan under the law, and then we collect impact fees on their behalf with new development. This year in twenty twenty-four, the Kent School District's impact fee remains zero. They had a zero, I believe, since twenty twenty-one. That is due to the fact that they are showing that they have enough funds available to meet the infrastructure demands for the school district. One important distinction I want to make is that for the school districts, which is a little bit different than what you saw in the fire, is that this is really just brick and mortar. The school cannot spend this money on things like technology, school lunch programs, et cetera, strictly brick and mortar, portables, new facilities or facility improvements. And so they've identified and you'll see that in the back few pages of that capital program that they have enough capital there to meet their infrastructure needs moving forward. They also did a capacity study again in twenty twenty-three. They had done one in twenty twenty-one. That that's kind of showing that their enrollment's kind of saying, staying roughly level, I will say. And so again, that's a reason for a zero impact fee this year. Similar to the fire impact fees, we evaluated that to ensure that their findings remain concurrent with what we have in our comprehensive plan for growth. The school district does a great job of identifying that the development within Covington within their impact fees, so that's a pretty easy assessment for us. And we feel at this point their services are evolving to meet the increased demand. Again, staff will return in December with the final ordinance to adopt the Kent School District's capital program into our comp plan. And then also the identified impact fee of zero. And so if, unless there's any questions of the council on this particular topic, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Selena. The ground rules for public comment during this public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Anybody online? Seeing nobody approached today, so raise their hand. I declare this public hearing closed. Does counsel have any questions for Selena? Beth?
On page one thirty-five, they were talking about the packet. It alluded to sidewalk improvements and sidewalk construction, and now I'm not sure how far away from the school that would. Like, is it just in front of the school property? Is it like for the safe passage to school? And where I'm going with this is they're saying that they don't need any more impact fees, but we have a dire need for sidewalks around our schools and I I still, and I know I said this last year, I find it really hard to believe that we should not be charging an impact fee on new development when we have a lot more. And we hear about it from our commissioners and all across the board. You know, if if that can be used for sidewalk capital improvement, I have a really hard time saying, no, let's not collect any school impact fees. But I don't know what we do about it next because they are the ones that brought it to us, so if there's.
Yeah, as far as the impact fees go, what the school can spend that on, that's on their capital program. I can't really speak to the level that it gets down to sidewalks. And that could be oftentimes through a bond initiative that they might have had otherwise for schools improvements. But it but I can speak to the fact that the school district determines whether or not they collect an impact fee. We just adopt that on their behalf. So even if we felt, the city of Covington felt we wanted to collect an impact fee on behalf of the school district, we would need to do that capital assessment and prove that that was a necessary dollar amount to to capture. So it it is kind of at the whim of of the school district's choice not to move forward based on the assessments that they have and the way that they're identifying their capital. Obviously, it's something that we had robust conversation about kind of the last couple of years about about their zero impact fee and that could possibly change. I think a lot of this is also tied, as you read with throughout the document, with enrollment and just ensuring that they have capacity within their schools. You know, to to spend that capital, to have a need to spend the capital.
Well, I guess the follow-up would then be, and I'm not saying that we would, because we'd have to decide if that, how would there should be a symbiotic relationship between the city and the school and just because they presented, if we feel like there might be a need in our city to do something different, how open would they be to that conversation for us? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, that's a good question. I actually am not sure how that would work. I mean, I I from a planning perspective, we work really close with the school. They get notified about development applications that are coming in. They account for the growth that we anticipate within their capital program. It would be, and and Mark might have something additional here, but you know, I think that conversation that you're bringing about is a little bit separate of the impact fees and that could be something as we're landing in our comprehensive planning process to really identify some of those safe routes to school and is there an opportunity for maybe them to help carry some of that expectation for sidewalk improvements. Those are the types of conversations we can begin to explore outside of the impact fee conversation. Would be my suggestion.
Mark?
Thank you, mayor. Very briefly. Excuse me. The school district follows a very set formula for coming up with what their school impact fees are going to be for the upcoming year. And school and cities do have some authority to make different decisions, but I generally recommend against making changes that the school district does not recommend it because that wouldn't fit with what their formulas are stating for growth and what they're going to need for the schools as new growth comes in. And as you'll recall, this is a very cyclical. This is very cyclical where the impact fees will go up and down based upon where growth is. So when growth is very low or growth is lower, the impact fees will be lower. And then when growth picks up again, it'll shoot up for the next couple of years. So generally, impact fees are lagging behind by a year or two beyond the behind what is happening with the actual impact fees coming in. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. I just, it seems like with all of the growth coming right around the corner, I'd hate to miss out if we have a year where there's, you know, two or three hundred homes going in and then all of a sudden we don't have that impact fee to help mitigate that and we won't get it until the following year and by then.
That that is a real concern and it's just the way the system is set up currently and there's not a lot of movement from school districts or anyone else to redo the formula for how they calculate impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Selena. That concludes our three public hearings. Let's move into new business item number four. That concludes our three public hearings. Let's move into new business item number four. Consider appointment to the youth council. Does counsel wish to take action tonight?
I moved to appoint Anna Rely Castillo to youth council position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Anna Rely Castillo to fill position number nine on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Beth would like to speak to your motion.
Yeah, I thought, I will say her application was one of the most thorough. As far as her ideas and she really does want to do, uh, want to get involved in her community and, and I think she will be a great addition to the youth council team. Echoing what we've been hearing about having places for youth to gather. Transportation being an issue. And these are, these are things that the more people we can get talking about that, hopefully we can start to find solutions for that for our young, young adults.
Well, thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would like to speak to your second.
Yeah, Anna Rely seems really excited about the opportunity to serve. I also noticed that one of her, they call them references, is an existing super engaged youth council member. So that's helpful as well. She had, you know, echoed a lot of concerns that we've heard from our youth, more activities, transportation. And I think that she would really help support the team in creating that change that they're looking for and coming with ideas to the council.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for against the moment? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Anna Rely Castillo to fill position nine on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. All those in favor, state aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Anna Rely. Next is new business item number five. Consider approving the artwork selections for the rotating public art program. Jonathan, welcome.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Jonathan Sida, and I am the Parks Project Manager as well as the Staff Liaison to the City Arts Commission. Uh, the purpose of this agenda item is to review submissions from the two thousand twenty-three rotating public art program call and consider approving the Art Commission's recommendation for two individual works to be installed in Covington Community Park. The two recommended works are by artist Jerry Newcomb and Matt Babcock. But in this presentation, we will also review all submissions, including alternate submitted works by McRae Wild, Jose Trejo Maya, Jason Paul, Kyle Ocean, Steve Nagode, and additional works by Matt Babcock. Alternatives to approving the recommended selections by the Arts Commission are to one, approve alternate submitted works chosen by council. Or two, reject the submitted artwork and complete a new call for rotating public art submissions. Mason will be sharing the presentation. So our rotating public art program, two thousand twenty-three submissions. Uh, just a little bit of background information about the submitter submissions portal. Uh, we use Cafe Call for Entry and Application Management for the Arts. Uh, it was launched in two thousand five and designed by arts administrators to make the application and adjudication process more efficient. The platform is powered by the Western States Art Federation, a Denver-based regional nonprofit art service organization. Uh, to date, Cafe has completed over fifty-five hundred successful public art calls and boasts a network of over twelve hundred arts organizations and a community of one hundred and thirty thousand professional artists. Cafe was previously used by the city to solicit and acquire the Seahorse Sculpture at Covington Aquatic Center uh, as well as the Metamorphosis piece at Covington Community Park, and I believe some of the vinyl art wraps calls as well. Uh, the submissions criteria for this rotating art call, uh, we looked at a application date range of about five weeks. The call itself said the city seeks unique art pieces complementary to Covington Community Park, the idea of creative placemaking. The city is searching for well-qualified professional emerging three D artists residing in the Pacific Northwest to submit entries. Uh, for our theme listed on the call, uh, we stated that while there is no requisite theme, works that incorporate elemental themes of earth, water, and air, the colors of which are currently part of city branding, are encouraged. We received a number of applications totaling to seven artists, some submitting one work, others submitting up to three. So we'll go ahead and take a look at those submitted works. Matt Babcock, one of the two recommended works by the Arts Commission is the first selection there, Crow, powder coated aluminum, and you can see the dimensions below. All these works will have the name of the work, the materials, and the dimensions. Ultimate, al- alternate works submitted by Matt include Cerberus and Blue Spoonbill. The next recommended artwork from Jerry Newcomb, works called Blue Spire, cast glass and steel. Kyle Ocean, Ocean's Splice. Material listed as mild steel. Steve Nagode, two submissions, Giant Pacific Octopus, Steel and Recycled Bicycle Parks, and Bet You Can Steel. Jason Paul, Elk. Steel sculpture. Jose Trejo Maya, Transparencies in Time, a mix of plastic and transparency foam. McRae Wild, Inside Out, Aluminum and Steel. Jetha Malink, Steel. And Prevail, Clear Coated Steel. Those were the artworks submitted, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
So I, I'm noticing, well, I just, I noticed that Matt Babcock's, uh, do, his work is in aluminum. And that was one of the ones that we select, that the Arts Commission selected. I, I, I just, I don't see a crow, but that, hey, artists are, it's, it's interpretive to people how they are. But how, how are we certain that an aluminum, aluminum's not the world's strongest metal? We're supposed to have it for about three years. What are the odds he's out there every weekend fixing it because someone has decided to play on it?
I think that risk is there, but in what we, one of the things that we consider once we select the artist, and just for a little context, the review process by the Arts Commission looked exclusively, when we looked at these different submissions, at the aesthetic strength of the work, uh, the ability of the work to generate dialogue and the suitability of the work in terms of nothing offensive, nothing inappropriate, you know, nothing potentially dangerous, which I think you may be speaking to a little bit fragile. And just to give you a little context, additional context on the types of artists who submitted, submitting works to us. I did bring in Matt's resume. Um, and I think one of the things that we considered with the selection is the range of works that he has in the past decade done in terms of public sculpture commissions and outdoor sculpture exhibitions. This artist has a pretty impressive resume. Las Vegas, Nevada, DC, Los Gatos, California, Jacksonville, Missoula, Anchorage, all over Washington State, all over Oregon, Idaho, Montana, et cetera. So in looking at the resume after we selected the work, uh, I, I think we were considering that with this extensive public sculpture display, this is a very experienced artist who knows the risks and liabilities and strength of his own work and ability to display it in public, uh, using materials that are sturdy enough to be outdoors for three years.
Next question is, is what was the reason for the rejection of some of these others? Like, we'll go with Jason Paul's Elk or uh, the oceans, or Ocean Splice for Kyle Ocean. I'm just picking a couple at random here.
Isn't it possible to bring the, uh, pathway back up a second? Thank you. My recollection, the discussion around Kyle Ocean, for example, Ocean's Splice, it's two large sculptural pieces. The way in which they're displayed in the submittal, there was some concern that they could fit on our platform size. The platform size was provided to all the artists in the art call itself. But there was a little bit of concern there. There was a little bit of concern as to how much they would have to be manipulated in terms of closing the pieces, the individual pieces together. How inviting would that be to small children to want to interact with them, move between them, et cetera? Uh, and then just the aesthetic quality of the work compared to the other submissions. I believe those were the discussion points for that work. And then the discussion around Elk, I think everyone was initially, on the Arts Commission, was initially impressed with the, um, the realism on that, on that initial photo. There was an alternate photo of the front of the elk and, um, I think it's fair to say that the, the side profile of the elk has a great deal of realism to it. The front of the elk is, uh, much more challenging uh, for an audience, um, potentially frightening. And, uh, we looked at those considerations.
Frightening in person.
The considerations of, of that, plus, um, just looking at the antlers uh, and the sort of sharp edges on that. I think those were, those were questions that the Arts Commission engaged, uh, in part of the evaluation of that work.
Then, then my next question is, um, Blue Spire, and I, I'm sorry if I'm hogging all the question time, but Blue Spire is made of cast glass and steel, and I'm guessing that the, the frame is steel and then everything that's blue on it is glass. What are the odds that, say, one day we have a maintenance crew out there and they're mowing the lawn and it kicks a rock up and breaks the glass on there?
That, that's a potential liability, and I, I think that's a part of the contractual uh, agreement between the city and the exhibiting artist. Again, our second selected artist here, Jerry Newcomb, uh, also a quite impressive resume. Jerry's a resident of Lopez Island. Also exhibited extensively throughout the Pacific Northwest. Um, he's, his other job is actually as an instructor in glass. He's worked, um, as an instructor in glass sculpture locales in Tacoma, Portland, and, uh, the Corning Museum of Glass in Corning, New York. So a pretty experienced artist working in, um, mixed materials of glass and metal.
I'm sure there's other questions. I'm just gonna state it, state my opinion, and then I'm gonna go on. Uh, I am fine with Blue Spire, but I would like to replace, uh, Crowe with Elk personally. For if any other reason, then I think Elk would be more stable too, because we're gonna see a bunch of people trying to play around these things. Yeah, there might be some sharp edges, but I don't think Elk is gonna break if someone decides to stand on it.
Anybody else have any questions for Jonathan?
I, during the joint meeting, there was a talk about some of the alternatives that weren't picked because they weren't available by the time the select, was that part of those lists that are on here? Is that why we couldn't, or?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So I can speak to that a little bit, if that slides up one more time, please.
I was just wondering if the list was inclusive of all of those alternative.
Now, this was, this was a bit of a learning experience for both myself and I think the Arts Commission in this, in this case. For example, our original, uh, selection, uh, and the one that I think was pretty unanimous in terms of, of the Arts Commission's vote, uh, was Blue Spoonbill by Matt Babcock. Um, the Arts Commission did have some questions to the artists before we made our final selections. Uh, and in that sort of transitional process, it was passed along to us by Matt that Blue Spoonbill was no longer available. Uh, we also found that with another initial selection, that one being, I believe it's the last one. Uh, yes, McRae Wild's Prevail, that was the original second choice as well. Uh, was initially available, and we had a soft commitment on that work. And then about a week later, he wrote me again and said, oh, uh, not available anymore. Um, sorry, but another municipality scooped up the work before you were able to execute and make the commitment. So one of our learning lessons is that, uh, these artists are definitely submitting the same work to multiple municipalities, multiple art calls, multiple agencies. And it's kind of a first come, first served, possibly who's the highest bidder, uh, kind of situation that we're dealing with. So I think in, in discussing, uh, steps forward for future art calls, um, a couple of the things we, we looked at in our evaluation is to really tighten the deadline date for these submissions and kind of try to line them up with the, uh, upcoming Arts Commission meeting where we can kind of quickly look at them and then make concrete decisions and turn around and get back to the artists immediately. So that we'll be in a more competitive position to get the artworks that were selected initially.
Any other question? I am perfectly fine with the Art Commission recommendation. Debbie, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I, I would just kind of second what, um, Joe was saying about Crowe. And I think our initial, uh, reaction to that one that was presented before was that some of us didn't quite see the, the crow in that. And I think Blue Spire is beautiful. Uh, there is that concern about the glass breakage. And did you talk to the artist about that concern? Has he used that similar? Uh, combination of the art and steel in other locations and had any problems with it with breakage?
I did not have a discussion with, uh, either artists about challenges they may have had exhibiting their work in other locations or circumstances. Um, but I, I did speak to both artists about our interest in, in selecting their works and kind of told them of our internal process and how we review and make a final decision about, uh, those things. Um, I think those kinds of concerns would be addressed in the contractual agreement between the artists and the city.
Thank you.
My personal is, so when looking at Crowe, when we looked at it, the original joint session, it's like one of those art pieces that is multiple pieces and as it turns and moves and you change the view, you can actually see what a crow, when you're looking at it a different way, it looks like what this picture showed here. So it's taking your eye and looking at an item differently. Just like when you're in a museum and the pieces are connected by many different strings and that they move, then you'll see what happens. So I am perfectly fine with what the Arts Commission is bringing forward to us. Um, but what is the rest of counsel? We have, there is a motion, potential motion to approve the rotating art program selections for Covington Community Park as recommended by the Arts Commission, but we can make a suggested change also.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the rotating art program selection for Covington Community Park as recommended by the Arts Commission. Jennifer, would like to speak to your motion.
Yes, the crow, that's the whole point. Did we not hear the three things that the commission used to inspire dialogue? That's the whole point of the crow, man. It looks like a staple removal, staple removers at one angle. And then when you look at it another way, it's a crow. It, I think it will be the most interesting piece out of all of them because people will be like, do you see the crow? No. Do you see the, yes, I do see the crow. Like, I'm sitting here pointing to Joe. This is the head, this is the wing. I'm doing the same thing with each other. And that's the whole point. It can't all just look the same. That's the entire point of art. And then the other one. Honestly reminds me of the art at the library. It's glass. It has been there. How many years, Mayor? At least fifteen.
At least fifteen if not.
And once. There was a cracked piece of glass um, that the artist that I'm aware of had to come out and fix. And that's in a very high volume um, high use area. So. I appreciate uh, the commission's, you know, really thoroughness and really paying attention to the artist's. Um, experience and repertoire because correct, it does really make a difference. That they know what they're doing before we put their art in our uh, public spaces. And I also think that glass one looks like a. Octopus tentacle. It it just, it's like the possibilities are endless. It's super fun, so I fully support the motion. Thank you, Commission, for all of the hard work.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Um, sure, I don't have a lot to add. I mean, I I think um, art. Often is. Well, it is very subjective and it depends on, you know, the person and what you like. And I mean, I originally. Um, gravitated toward that elk as well, but that's my taste. I like realistic art, but then. I also will defer to the Art Commission that we just have those little pictures to look at in in your professional judgment if it. Would be more shocking than inviting, then yeah, I think I'll defer to them um. Uh, one thing I would suggest, I. Regardless of what we pick is, you know, maybe somehow incorporating a QR code into the the um. Materials so that people can. Tell us what they think or what they thought or what their reaction was, or you know, something. I mean, obviously we don't want, you know. Some, I would put some thinking into how we can get people interacting with our art to tell us, you know, this is, this really is, I see the staple remover or whatnot, you know. Um, but make it. More than just. Looking at it, there is some other opportunity they can take to. Have some connection to it too. So. If it's easy to put a QR code at the bottom, you know, that allows them to give feedback, what would you like to see in the future? I think. That'd be a good opportunity, so. That's it.
Anybody else? Um, just to speak for or against the motion, Beth?
I. Art is art and it's great and I. The crow creeps me out because it looks like a replicator from Stargate issue one. I swear to God. And look at it and that's all I can see. And so that's me and it's trigger for me, but that's okay. I, that octopus is far out, and I think that's, I don't know. I mean, to me that just could, but I don't know if that was available. I I would recommend the Blue Spire. An octopus. But I know we're talking, so. Half four, half not. Again, can't really do that, but. I'll support whatever the rest of everybody says. I just, I feel like it could be scary to certain people. Because it does look very Black Mirror-ish. I don't know. It's the only thing about that one. I mean, I appreciate. The different angles and seeing different things in it. But if the elk is gonna scare people, I think that probably.
Put it in Jenkins Creek right now.
Yeah. Anyway, I I that's just feedback when we go to do the ball.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against?
Joe. So I like Blue Spire. I think that's a good one. I, my worry is just if it, if something does happen and we don't pick up, get all the glass picked up. That's my worry about it. And I don't think something's gonna happen, but. But when it comes to crow, I'm. I'm just not a, I'm not a fan of it because I, I, you, you may think it's adorable. I think the elk is adorable. I I I get where people would think it's a scary animal. It is a scary animal. That's why we eat them um. Some people will eat crow. But I um. And I appreciate the Arts Commission and their hard work on this. But I disagree with them on there's one of their selections. And I I I agree with one selection. I disagree with the other. I'm just not a fan of it. And unfortunately, because I'm not a fan, I'm, I am gonna vote no, just because I think I think aluminum is going, we're gonna be having the artists out there fixing it every six months.
Been moved and seconded to approve the rotating art program selection for Covenant Community Park. As recommended by the Arts Commission, all is in favor, state aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is new business item number six, discuss the comprehensive plan targeted stakeholder engagement report. Selena.
Hi, Council. Um, this. I know, it's me again. I um, what you have for you tonight is just really for um, discussion purposes and for your information. There's no action that that staff is looking for out of, out of this agenda item. Um, the comprehensive plan targeted stakeholder is a. Um, a report that came out of our comprehensive plan, public engagement process. So as, if you recall, when we were talking about the comp plan process early on last year. We have a requirement to have a very robust public engagement process. And part of that is also reaching out to folks within our community that have historically been left out of the planning process. Um. And so at the planning commission worked with us and Burke to come up with a program for how we wanted to target these different folks within our community. Especially um, around the areas of our BIPOC businesses and ownership. Um, our philanthropic and religion areas, our hospitals, you know, and even folks that are really engaged in our community, but may not be able to come to a six PM planning commission meeting. So we were really trying to meet these folks where they were, you know, throughout the day, um, so that they can provide us some really good input. Um. And you you know, and it worked. It was really great. I was, I was fortunate enough to attend some of them, and it was a really lovely experience and. Really a good lesson learned for how we move forward potentially in having some of these part conversations around comprehensive planning, housing, land use, transportation. Um, you name it, we're gonna talk about it all. Um, so what, what ultimately how this worked was that the staff worked with the chamber and we identified a list of participants to contact. We also worked with Krista and other folks on our staff that are really engaged in the community, the planning commission. Um, to be able to get some folks um, names that we could, that we could meet with. Of the seventeen people we reached out to, we had about fourteen folks respond, and you can see those groups that we met with. Um, I consider that a really big success. Um, and obviously we had to be very mindful about how many people we even reach out to because this is a budgetary cost for us. And so we have to balance that with the limited funds that we do have for public outreach. Um, ultimately, as you can see, you know, some of the outcomes of the interviews. Um, at least from the planning perspective and the commission's perspective, um, as you read through this. I think, and I hope, and if you're curious to know what your takeaways are, is that I think our community is pretty aligned with where we are in our council when we think about our vision, mission, and goals, and even some of our strategic actions. Things that they're asking for, things that they're wanting, things that they enjoy, things they'd like to see more of are absolutely conversations that have been happening in the council chambers. Over the last few years. And so I think that's a really good testament that we're communicating and that that feedback's getting to us. Um. The other really cool thing about this interview is, or these interviews is that. Um, the planning commission had set forth a series of goals for themselves and how to do public outreach, and you heard. Um, Commissioner Cottle tonight talk about, oh, we would have liked a hundred. That was actually one of their goals. Uh, but you know, they got about thirty, but we're gonna have more, so maybe by the end we'll have a hundred. Um, one of their goals that they lined out for themselves early in this process was, was to do this, to do exactly this, to meet people where they were. And especially the folks that don't generally come to meetings or that are unable to to attend a meeting. Um, so that was a really great thing, um, really great success. Um, other than that, I think I'm just open if there's any questions or comments of the the council tonight. I'm happy to have open dialogue about this, but it was really just informational. If there is a question I cannot answer, um, I will bring it back to Burke and bring that back to staff. Um, Burke really took the lead in kind of a neutral. Interviewer of these folks and the people that did those interviews are now getting their PhDs in Europe. So um, they could not join us tonight, so I will do my best to facilitate that.
Council, any questions for Selena? Does not look like. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. Um, do you need anything from us?
No, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Selena. Next up is new business item number seven. Consider an ordinance amending. Covington Municipal Code two dot one zero dot zero one zero to revise the salaries of the mayor and the council members. Noreen?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, a salary survey was recently completed this year, um, only about two weeks ago by Capitao Associates. Uh, in line with our uh, five-year increments that we do salary surveys uh, by city policy. And later this year, we will present um, the results. For staff because it was a citywide survey. But right now, we're just presenting the results for the council and mayor. And um, it was indicated um, as said that the. Um, salaries, the monthly salaries should be increased. From seven hundred eighty dollars per month to one thousand four hundred five per month for each council member. And that the additional stipend added to the mayor's position shall decrease from two hundred dollars per month to one hundred eighty-one dollars per month. What I wanted to say first about the mayor's a stipend. Um, it kind of surprised me that it decreased because quite honestly, it's been. The same for. Um, ten years. It'll be ten years next year that it stayed at two hundred dollars. So to see it decrease ten years later. Was surprising. Um, and as far as the increase for the council members. Although it seems large. Um, first off. The basic amount isn't really all that much to begin with, considering what council members do. I mean, they make the decisions and do the research and interface for the entire city. Um, so for that amount of responsibility. Um, that's really not a lot of money, although I know the increase seems significant. There was another large increase um, back when the first salary survey was performed in two thousand. And it was a fifty percent increase. And it's been less since then, and it will wax and wane. Uh, it just depends upon what is happening out there. I mean, the numbers are what they are. They speak for themselves. Um, and. If it's decreased. Uh, it only compounds a problem for the future. If it's, if you do not keep up with the averages um, of what's happening. So that's the risk you run, uh, you know, today you make a decision, but. You know, five years from now, when a survey is done, the, it may be even greater. Uh, the difference. So I just wanted to point those two things out, so. And. From that, I will take any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions?
Sean, um, just. Do you have, you said you're gonna share um. The. Survey and what are, what are our neighbor communities? Um, that are similar to us. What are they? What is their compensation? And then. Follow up on that. You mentioned that the. The stipend for the mayor has been reduced, and you were surprised to see that. What's driving that?
I I honestly don't know because I, I don't do the survey. The only thing I can, uh, I didn't do the survey this time around. I've done two previous ones. The only thing I can say is. That apparently the shift has been to make a larger compensation for each council member and. Reduce it. Uh. You know, for the mayor, we have a different uh, pool each time we do. Excuse me, each time we do a survey, we have a different comparable pool because it depends upon what is going in the city, so. You know, it's like comparing apples to oranges from one survey to the next. Uh, and I don't know what the reasoning is behind the mayor's stipend being so small in this instance. But again, it might be because there was a shift to put more money into each council member's um, compensation.
Councilor, did you wanna know which cities we were compared with?
Sure.
Yeah.
It was Bothell, Issaquah, Maple Valley, Sammamish, Sea Tack, and Shore.
Okay. Bothell, Issaquah.
Maple Valley, Sammamish, Sea Tack, Shore.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jennifer?
Um, could we? Uh, if we wanted to, because to me an eighty percent raise is gross, completely gross. I. Just cannot, as an elected. Give myself an eighty percent raise. Um. Even though I I hear what you're saying, but come on, like if you saw that on the news, seriously, I would be disgusted with people that I elect. So I'm wondering if we were able to. Two things, um, stagger it, so it's like a twenty percent increase each year. And then secondly, instead of the mayor. Being like a dollar amount, just make the mayor twenty-five percent additional. Uh, based on historical, you know, that's roughly kind of what it's been in the past, um, because. You know, and again, not. We don't have access to these survey details, but. From the, the, from Covington's perspective, the culture in Covington is that our mayor is involved. I mean, even if the other council members show up to events, we know this, right? Everyone's excited to see the mayor, and we want to encourage our mayor to do that, not so much so. That the mayor is doing it to get extra money. So that's why I'm saying just an additional twenty-five percent, but. Given the current. And. You know, expectations of our community, I I do think it's reasonable to. Set it as a a percentage instead of this dollar amount. That way it moves. Kind of irres- irrespective of the increase in general. Can we modify this?
You could, you could do whatever.
Okay.
You agree to.
So that would be my. Suggestion to council.
Mark, is that your hand up? No, it's Debbie. Go ahead, Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I. My question's already been kind of asked um, by Jennifer, and that was. Um, do we have the ability to make it a a lower amount and stagger it? So that it's not all hit at once. Um, I agree with what Jennifer said, that is from the optics of. We're in an environment right now where we're um, struggling to, you know, look at how we're gonna fund. A public service, excuse me, um. Public safety going forward and and some other critical areas. That just the, you know, going to that extreme of that. Increase. So, but the question's already been answered. We do have the ability to make that a a smaller amount. If we choose. Um, in respect to the mayor's salary, I, I would not agree to to go backwards with the the mayor. Um, on his percentage of the stipend. That is a very active mayor in our city and that may be very different from other cities. I think it's probably similar to the way Maple Valley is set up. I don't know. About the other cities, they are larger. Um, but it just. It's, it's not a a huge decrease, but I just don't think that that's. Right for the position that um. The mayor plays in our city. So my. I I would like to have us look at a a smaller amount for the. Um. Salaries for council members. And then I I like Jennifer's idea about making it a percentage, so it just moves with wherever we're going. Um. But I'm kind of open to what other council members have brought on there.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe?
So. I like it. I I have voted for every one of these salary increases. But as I look at them now, it's this, uh, this eighty percent raises is hard for me to swallow. Uh, don't get me wrong, I'd love to take it. Uh, doesn't affect me though until twenty twenty-six. Uh, if I get reelected. But I also wanna say that I think. I I've come to. Dislike the idea of us. Giving ourselves raises and patting ourselves. It feels like we're patting ourselves on the back, and I feel like there should be. A different way we do this, and luckily the state has given us a different way, and I think giving us, I, I think. Looking into. Having a salary commission of appointed people. Uh, of of us appointing commissioners, basically, that's the same way we do for parks or planning or something to that extent. Would be the way to go. Would they say that we need, that we should get a fourteen hundred and five dollars a month? Maybe. Would they say, no, fourteen hundred and five is too much? We think twelve hundred is what it is, or you guys should stay at the seven eighty. Who knows where it is, but they get the facts from the survey. They look at everything we do. It's an option. But as of right now. Looking at this, I staggering it. Where, if we can do that, where it's. Twenty percent, you know, you get a twenty percent. Where if we can do that, where it's twenty percent, you know, you get a twenty percent raise next year, get a twenty twenty percent the next year or something to that. I could be down for that, but I really think. That giving it all at once is. Not a good look. I also think though that us voting for our own pay raises. Even though we can't accept, we don't get them until your next, the next time you're sworn in. Still doesn't look right to me either. So I think we need to look at a salary commission and then maybe and. Other ways to do do this first. So that's just where I'm at right now.
Anybody else?
And I've been on the council for three years now and most of us have been on there at least that long. Never once, never once from any. Constituent have I ever heard them say, we need to spend more money on the city council. We need money for parks maintenance. We need money for police. This is a civil service. We are servants and we are volunteering and we do get compensated. To help pay for our expenses. We are here because we want to serve the community and I have a really hard time. Eighty percent increase? Absolutely not. I could see maybe where with the mayor because he does more, maybe his stipend could go up a little bit. But honestly, like. I'm not in it for the money. We're in it because we want to make a difference in our communities. Staff is a whole nother scenario because you, it's your full time job, like you're committed in in your work. We're committed because we live here. And I have no problem. Forgoing, we could, we could come back in two years and decide we want to do a raise. It doesn't have to be this year just because it's, we can make, we can make. That anytime we want. And or get a commission involved, some some scenario have more input. I I just, I don't feel comfortable with this at all. I would be fine with a, you know, some kind of a smaller increase. I want for Jeff, the mayor. Those are my thoughts. I just, I've never. We're talking, again, with all the other needs that we have in the city. You know, this is. We're not here for the for the money. We aren't.
Thank you. Christina.
Thank you. I think we can all agree that we don't do this for the, break the bank pay that we get here. I also think that we're put here to do the hard job. Of making those decisions, though. One of those being that we have to kind of look in the mirror sometimes. And make the harder decision. Does. Do I agree with the increase? I I would fully be on board with with the percentage increase. I also heard what Noreen said, though. That we don't want to create this gap and then have to. Because if we do, and I mean, we know where inflation is going. There will be a bigger number at the end of this where, how do you, how do you make up for that now? Looking around at our neighboring cities, I don't. Again, I'm gonna reiterate that we don't do this for the money, but if we look at our neighboring cities and we are comparing to. Similar. Pays. I'm not sure that we would look holier than thou by just being the ones that get paid the least. That doesn't make the most sense to me in the long run because again. This isn't breaking the bank. I do agree that we could use every dollar for our parks and. And everything else we need. I mean, police. We're we're under underwater on a lot of things. But it but it makes sense to be in tune with the current economy. Again, I I I don't think that eighty percent needs to happen. Immediately or. You know, very soon. But it would be wise of us to at least somewhat go with the market and not create a bigger issue moving forward. So I I and I would agree with the percentage increase for for the mayor. That would, that makes a lot of sense. It's my two cents.
Don't have any consensus on anything.
No.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So I have a question for Mark. Are you there? There you are.
Yes, Mayor.
Jennifer brought up, so. Going back in history for council, we voted that council, this is. Twelve years ago. Voted to go CPI on council, which the state does not allow. You know, do an annual, a code. So it's not allowed on council. It would be allowed on council if there was a salary review. Commission, which is what other cities use. But Jennifer brought up. Instead of doing the eighty percent. Are we allowed to do a twenty percent increase each year? Or is it better? Because you're. So like the the three people. The three positions that wouldn't get reelected for two more years, wouldn't be able to see any of that anyway. So do we do twenty percent each year? Do you do forty percent? Do we not do anything? I'm just talking council positions first. So is it allowed to do a twenty percent increase each year? To come up with that eighty percent?
So you make a good point, Mayor, that to do the twenty percent each year, every time it went, the new twenty percent went into effect. It would not apply to the council members until the next term went into effect. So if it were. If there there could be three years of twenty percent increases that would go into place, but they wouldn't affect pay until the next. Time that someone is is elected and their term has begun. So the twenty percent, if it were based on terms, could be something, but. If it's based upon an annual increase, then it's going to end up resulting in the same. Same place in the end, but for those council members that are. Getting elected sooner or have their terms be coming up sooner. Then it would be increasing for them throughout for at least the first twenty percent as they. Were reelected.
So. If I'm hearing you right, the. Ones being reelected for next January, next terms. Would get twenty percent each for those four years. The other people, the other positions in two years wouldn't see it and then they would see it for twenty percent for the next two years.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was following you correctly.
Right. And if it went up annually, so it's a twenty percent this year and twenty percent the next year. Then that would just track with each of the individual positions and when. They were up for election because basically they don't, what the legislature wanted here is to make sure that councils aren't. Giving themselves raises individually. That you have to be elected in order to receive any kind of raise. So you have to go through the entire process of working through the electorate in order to receive the money. Because you aren't guaranteed anything until the people have spoken and said you are. That you are in this position and will be paid the amount that has been set by council, by a previous council, not the new one that will be coming into office.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that. All right, so Christina. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just gonna spit out one more perspective. It it. We all serve, we're all here every, you know, twice a month and it doesn't make sense to me. It it makes sense, but numerically empirically it makes sense, but like I I would like to start. All at the same time. If if everyone's getting something, they should all get it because we're all serving. If it makes the most sense to. To hire this committee. That might be the thing that makes the most sense regardless of. You know, if if they're able to do it according to, you know, market value and and. Just really value us at what we do.
And the salary commission would take time to do that and you still wouldn't be able to put everybody on the same start thing.
No, you you would. Sorry.
Mark.
How long does that take?
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Just with regard to the salary commission, it's the mayor appointed upon approval by the council. And then it goes and look. Gets into and does does the same kind of study that has been done by. Cabot Dow Associates to determine what they recommend for council. Pay, whether it's pay increases, pay decreases or anything like that. And then that that will go into immediate effect because it's not a. Council driven decision. It's it's driven by an appointed body. But it still, as you pointed out, Mayor, will take a fair amount of time for this to be put together. Get the rules. It's all mechanical and the ordinance is simple to adopt a salary commission, but it won't be an overnight. Fix to the potential problem of this being of staggered salaries.
Thank you, Mark. What is count? So just looking at council salary. With the current salary survey that was completed by Cabot Dow Associates. That Noreen went through. These. It is suggested from seven eighty to fourteen oh five. What I'm hearing is that's too steep of an increase for council. Taking note of what Noreen said, that. Whatever you don't do at this point. Is going to make it even more exponential the next time a salary survey is done. Whether it's done by a commission. Or done by a separate salary. Survey like Noreen did. What is, so first off. Does council wish to see any form of increase? At this time?
Can I make a motion?
Okay, I was asking for direction.
But we have, all right, yeah. To be frank, no, I don't. I would, I would vote for maybe an increase to the mayor's stipend. Not for council at this time.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. So is there any appetite for increasing council salary at this time?
I would have entertained it. I was looking at potential options, but it doesn't seem like there's consensus. You know, seven eighty, I was just doing some. Calculations if we made that actually a thousand, that's two hundred and twenty dollars to round it up. That's a twenty percent. Increase for. For this upcoming. And then I like Jennifer's idea about the. Stipend for the mayor be a percentage of the monthly salary.
Okay, so you're. Saying to, instead of fourteen oh five, go to one thousand. Go a thousand dollars. And then the mayor's stipend at. Twenty five percent?
Yeah, that's just a suggestion, but yeah.
So that'd be basically two hundred and fifty dollars.
On top of that.
On top of that. Are you making a motion?
Uh, sure, I'll move it. I'll move. To, I got.
So here, let me rephrase that.
Um, Mayor, if I could step in, I've got some language here for this specific.
I was just gonna state it, but go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'll let you go ahead.
I was just gonna make. The motion is to adopt an ordinance amending Covington Municipal Code two dot two zero dot zero one zero to revise the salaries. Of the mayor and council members. And establishing a compensation implementation rate at the rate of one thousand dollars per month. For those council positions, one, three, five, and seven. Implemented on. January first, two thousand twenty four. And then the mayor's salary. At twenty five percent of that, which equates two hundred and fifty dollars. Does that work for you, Mark?
We could make that work.
If you, I mean, you can rephrase it if you want.
I I I, we don't need to go through and do strike throughs and underlines. There's a little bit, that'll be a simple change that I can. Make sure that's. Basically, what the, instead of what it reads right now, it will say, commencing January first, twenty twenty four. The base rate of the compensation for each and every council member position shall be one thousand dollars per month. And the appointed position of mayor shall receive an additional stipend of twenty percent, twenty five percent council member compensation per month.
That's much easier than what I said. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, can I make an amendment or do we need to have a discussion first?
No, you can. So now's the time to make an amendment.
I would like to amend the motion. To include what it is, a thousand dollars per month plus the twenty five percent for the mayor. But to include the creation of a salary commission to begin work sometime in twenty twenty four. To look at the, look at the salaries of council. And have them meet once every three years. Or we can work on that portion of the language later.
So is that something we would add now or do we want to discuss that at the summit in January? Mark.
That's a great question. The motion has been made to add a create a create salary commission, which is more, there's more to it than just. Making it, there's a whole ordinance process that would be required. I think if council could give us direction outside of this specific motion because. Councilmember Simomo, if with what the the original motion that's on the floor. Covers everything that you still want. Then I would suggest voting on that. And then getting council consensus or bringing a motion separately for a future agenda item or at the summit. To discuss implementing a salary commission. Because then staff can actually dig into it and give the full council all the information about what a salary commission entails. And make sure that it's, it fits with what council, this council wants proceeding in the future.
Think I understand what you said. I'm going to then strike my amendment and then ask to speak after the vote. To talk to staff.
And we can always bring it up as a future agenda.
Yeah, let's, I'll bring it up at that point.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. To. Beginning January first of two thousand twenty four to increase the council members' positions. As stated. One, three, five, and seven, and then the others, two, four, and six in January first of two thousand twenty six to a thousand dollars per month. With the mayor's monthly stipend to be twenty five percent. Which equates to two hundred and fifty dollars. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
You know, I I agree and and appreciate the. Depth of conversation, the. Thoughtfulness in this, and I also appreciate the the difficulty that this has and. It's interesting. I have had conversations and very few, yeah, do people ever ask, you know, or say, do, should we get increased compensation? But when we do say, I I've told people how much we do get, they're stunned to see how much we do. And how little we are. I don't know if compensated is the right word, but. How little, the amount, basically what I'm saying is, they see it as a pretty good return on investment for the amount of time and energy we put in, so. Yeah, that's, that's what I'll say on that.
Thank you. Jennifer.
No, if you need a second.
Christina. No, Debbie, sorry. Everybody speak, Debbie. Go ahead, Debbie. Speak to your second.
I think we all seconded at the same time. Well. We, as, as we've talked about, we are all doing this job because we love our community and we're here to serve. I don't think any one of us expected the amount that we get or that we would get an increase, but we. We also don't want to have future councils dealing with a very huge gap because of the decision we made today. So I think we've, we've agreed or settled on an increase that will keep that spread a little bit. Less for for future. The next five or six years when this is done. And I think absolutely we're going in the right direction for how we compensate the mayor for the work that it's done. So. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Debbie. Mark.
Just briefly, Mayor, would it be all right if I shared my screens so I can make sure that I'm capturing this appropriately?
Yes.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
So this is the option that council has identified so at this point. Saying that the the each and every council member shall receive one thousand dollars per month. The appointed position of mayor shall receive an additional stipend of twenty-five percent of the council member compensation per month. That could also be stated as that the cap that the mayor shall receive an additional two hundred and fifty dollars per month.
That's that's sounds better.
Yeah, we did what? I thought we wanted the percentage.
No, it's percentage.
We were stating percentage originally because we were doing twenty percent a year. And that's what I said.
No, that's.
So there this will be the only increase. It will be twenty-five percent of council. Excuse me. Sorry, my my mistake.
Go ahead.
Um, this will still be twenty-five percent of what the one thousand dollars. It's the same uh number either way.
Oh, I see.
There we're it would only increase in the future if council decided to take action.
Right.
And then at that point, you could just put it in as twenty-five percent again.
Yeah. Yeah, I I was thinking this would continue, but to do what. We'd have to pass it anyway. Two fifty is fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Does anybody else have any speak for against the motion? Beth?
Yeah, I'm still gonna say I don't think we should get a raise right now. I'm fine with the mayor. I am going to. I understand there's the concern about the gap down this road, but we're not trying to. We're not trying to hire. Interview and fill a staff position. It's a whole nother playing field and. Nobody looks at what the base rate is and goes, oh, that's gonna make me want to run like they're wanting to do it. And so not to say that at some point in the future, things don't need to go uh get raised, but. And I would also say too with that. The verbiage there, it's not each and every council member. It's only positions one, three, five, and seven. For January twenty-four. So we just need to double clear that out. And I might even suggest that the next time we do this, we do it so that the alternating three seats get first. Uh raise because the last time this happened, it was the same four positions that got the raise first, so um. That said. I'm gonna speak against the thousand dollar. Um, the increase to thousand dollars, but I would increase the mayor's stipend. To two fifty.
Christina.
Thank you. Um, I know this isn't an easy decision. Um, though. It I'll say this. Um, I have had the same experience that Sean has. When. What? When people know that we're serving, it's amazing. And then. And then when they find out how much. Like like you said, you can't say compensation. It like the the shock that they laugh, actually. Um, and I I don't think we're doing unimportant work, not that we're not. I I'm almost at that point where it's like. Either pay us or don't. Like, of course, we we serve and I would I would serve regardless of the amount. It doesn't change anything much. But um. But we kind of have to go in tune with neighboring cities and. Well, that's your opinion and this is mine and. And that's okay. And so I support our motion.
Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? I'll make a comment after we vote. It's been moved and seconded to. I I don't have what you have there, Mark. I'm just gonna say been moved and seconded to.
Would you like me to share my screen again, Mayor, so you can have the?
That way I can state it exactly as you have it written.
Thank you so much. Give me one moment here. And if Mayor, before you read this off, I want to make sure it's clear that. With this going and commencing January first, twenty twenty-four, it will still be staggered. At the the compensation will still still go into place staggered per section three of the ordinance. This is just setting it so it will fall into place as each election cycle comes up.
Okay. But it's moved and seconded to. Adopt an ordinance amending Covington Municipal Code two dot two zero dot one zero. Dot zero one zero to revise the salaries. Commencing January first of two thousand twenty-four, the base rate of the compensation for each and every council member. Position shall be one thousand dollars per month. And the appointed position of the mayor shall receive an additional stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars per month. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Been moved and it's been approved. Thank you. And just to um everybody's comment about people not knowing. How much we make when we state it. Uh when I speak to middle schools and high schools and tell them that the mayor only makes that extra. You ought to see their jaws grow. And I'm not in it for the money either, but I do enjoy speaking with all the kids. Um, that moves us into I new business item number eight. Discuss Republic Services two thousand twenty-four increase for recycle processing charge that. I'm going to recuse myself and turn the gavel over to. Don. I will step out of the room.
All right, um, thank you. Is it Don and you don't lead this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh Proton Smith and Council. Uh tonight I have uh discussing the twenty twenty-four Republic Services solid waste rates. Um as a reminder and what we reflect in the in the blue sheet. Um, there's an aspect which is the CPI uh increase, which is four point five one percent. Uh going into effect on January first. And then there uh that piece um as well as the um. Uh fixed annual charge change, which we discussed back in August about the way that that's being billed. Those pieces go into effect on January first and are already part of the contract. And doesn't need any decision uh from council since that's already been addressed. Uh the pieces that uh for tonight is uh the request from Republic Services to continue. The recycling processing charge, which is evaluated or has been evaluated on a year-by-year basis. Uh last year, um. That rate, the residential rate was one dollar and eighteen cents per residential customer per month. And then it was three dollars and ninety-three uh cents um. Uh per cubic yard for multifamily commercial. Um, the request from Republic Services is to continue the uh recycling processing charge and actually increase that. Uh the residential from one point one dollar and eighteen cents to one dollar and fifty-four cents. For the residential uh portion and then three from three ninety-three. Uh to five dollars and three cents per cubic yard for the multifamily and commercial customers. Uh one of the things that um wasn't on here is what is that? Uh difference, uh what is the amount that's generated by that increase? So um it's about seventy-seven thousand dollars um. Uh is the increase that is generated. Uh annually for that um. Amount, uh not the total piece, but just the increases from the one eighteen to one fifty-four. And the three ninety-three to five oh three generates about an additional seventy-seven thousand dollars uh for Republic Services. Um, I have the total cost for those as well, if you're wanting to know. What it generates total. Um, basically, the projected uh is about two hundred. Or three hundred and forty-eight thousand is what that would generate. So total. Um, with that, I can ask any or answer any questions you might have.
Any questions here?
Um, Don, in reading. The details of this, this is within their purview, within their contract to do even without.
Not not the recycling processing charge, the other pieces that can, the recycling processing charges outside or separate from the contract. And would be have to be something that council elects to um uh incur each. Or when any any changes in that regard and the way we handle that the last couple of years has been from year to year basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Oh, yeah.
Just elaborate on that, though. Um, it it said that they're going they their rate will increase from one eighteen, a dollar eighteen to buck fifty-four. So that makes it sound like they're gonna do it regardless whether we.
No, they're basically saying that that's what for them to recoup what uh the costs are. That's what it would be. They're they're way, basically, yeah.
Got it. Okay. And I move.
Oh, yes. And so just further clarity. So they're saying that the cost associated with collecting the recycling. And processing it is going up and thus the need to increase this rate. Correct. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anyone want to take action?
Yes, I will move. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To allow Republic Services to increase the recycling processing charge. To a dollar fifty-four per month for single-family residential and to five dollars and three cents per cubic yard for multifamily commercial. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Kristen, want to speak to your motion?
Sure, maybe I live in La La Land, but I still like recycling and I like what the idea behind it is. And maybe right now it's not working, but we're on a. I think we're on a good path. And we have booked service after hearing what their plans are for the future for recycling. Um, they're they're good plans, they're good designs, and I hope that they can be successful and we too can be successful with them.
Beth?
Um, much the same. I'd hate to see that that service go away because it becomes cost prohibitive for the for poll to audit, so.
Anybody else who should speak for against the motion? Okay. Um. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Um, motion.
On these all the times.
Okay.
Sticking with precedent.
Uh, you want to get the mayor? Sean. Oh, yeah. You better give that back.
I'll go home.
I think I'm part of your stipend.
Well.
Thank you all very much. Let's move into new business item number nine. Consider authorizing city manager to execute. An agreement with DCG Watershed Incorporated for professional services. Related to the planning, design, and development of Jenkins Creek Trail. Ethan?
Yes, good evening, Council. Uh this agenda item is really about the um. Vision for Jenkins Creek Trail um. Uh at a very high level, this is a trail that uh we kind of run through the city. Uh alongside Jenkins Creek or or in that vicinity, uh connecting neighborhoods, commercial areas, schools. Um, a lot of things in the city, supported in our pros plan and our comp plan. Uh but at a very high level in this um. Work that's being proposed really is kind of covering the gap of uh planning, uh where that alignment would work. Um, uh and so we can get to a point to where we start developing uh. Uh construction documents and actually building the trail. Uh, we do have some grant funding that supports this. We have uh. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a commerce grant that the the city was successful in in uh getting as well as a. Two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant uh from the State of Washington Recreation and Conservation Office to do this planning work. Um. We did do an RFQ to um. Solicit consultants. Uh we received two. Um, there are two that are familiar with the city. One is uh the consultant group that is uh doing the current Jenkins Creek. Park project and the other one is the consultant group that's doing Founders Park or SoCo Park. Um. Uh, they were both very competitive uh evaluating them. DCG Watershed did seem to be the better of the two options. Um, and so there is an agreement attached that is um. Proposed to start this work. Um be and there's only two elements as part of this initial phase. There's the master planning work. Um, and that would kind of cover. Approximately three miles, quite a large area of the full trail alignment. Um, and then there's a second phase that starts to focus in on what's that first segment that could be constructed. Um into a a realistic project, and that's what uh at the earlier uh study session joint meeting with Parks Commission, they alluded to the. Uh section from Jenkins Creek Park to uh the underpass that that's being built at what at the Ken Kangley. Um. This work also positions the city to pursue other grant funding. Um, further on, so it's kind of without kind of doing these steps and developing a master plan and. Uh thirty percent design, uh it's fairly hard to get future dollars for construction. So uh this is kind of the next step. Um, and with that, I will. Happy to answer any questions.
Just count some any questions for Ethan. Okay, thank you, Ethan. Before us, we have a potential motion to authorize the city manager. To execute the agreement in substantial form as attached here to with ECG Watershed Incorporated for architectural engineering, land surveying. And professional services related to feasibility, design, and development of Jenkins Creek Trails. Council wish to take action.
So moved. Second.
If the movement seconded, Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, fantastic that we were able to get the grant to cover the cost for that, and I know it's an important part of our pros plan and. Just from a walkability connectivity piece for um for our city, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do with that.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer?
Um, just that this is an exciting first step in uh really connecting our city and uh really excited about this. Thanks for. Making this great for us.
Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in substantial form. As attached here to with DCG Watershed Incorporated for architectural engineering, land surveying, and professional services. Related to the feasibility, design, and development of Jenkins Creek Park. All those in favor state aye. Aye. In your post, the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us into future agenda items. First off, looking this Saturday is our budget workshop at eight AM and then. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November fourteenth. We have right now, we have one commission interview at five forty. Joint session with Human Services, council meeting at seven. And Joe, isn't there a spec item you'd like to see on the future?
I would love to see us discuss the possibility of creating a salary commission on. Doesn't have to be on November fourteenth. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure you won't put it on November fourteenth, but I'd really like to see it sometime soon.
Is there consensus to bring this forward? Yes, there's consensus. Thank you, Joe. Is there anything else council would like to see on a future agenda? Okay. Uh, let's move into council staff comments. Start with Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor and Council. Uh this week we're uh attending at least two trunk or treat events, one at Cedar Valley. And one at Covington Elementary. So uh if any of you are there, we look forward to seeing you. That's it.
Thank you, Adam. Ethan?
I think we have some parks and rec staff that are gonna be at some of these trunk or treat events too. Uh, so hopefully we'll see you around. Uh, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Noreen?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you for doing the salary survey and bringing it back to us.
You're welcome.
Don?
Nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena?
Just quickly, I just want to inform the council that the Community Development Department received a housing grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's kind of small potatoes in the amount of work that we have ahead of us to do the ADU requirements, missing middle requirements, and the housing for all income levels. Uh but we'll be talking more about that over the next, I would say, eighteen months. So, thank you.
Thanks, Selena.
I see.
That's just a quick update that the auditors have started their third and final part of audits, hoping that they will. Wrap it up by the end of the year and I will keep you posted as soon as.
Great. Thanks, Casey. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. And uh first off, I want to apologize for interrupting you earlier uh during the discussion about the salary schedule that. That was inappropriate on my part. Um, the only other thing that I have to state is that. Um, I'm going to make one change in the recital to the ordinance as well, because currently it states that the council is accepting and adopting. The current the salary survey results, and I'm going to adjust that to say that council has gone it with the direction as currently listed in the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. And I appreciate. You always interrupting when needed because it's necessary, so thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And there's no executive session. Uh, thank you, Baron. And there's no executive session tonight.
Thank you for that. Regan?
Uh, just to add on what the mayor said about our budget workshop this Saturday, um, starting at eight, there's breakfast at seven thirty.
No, no, just eight. I'll eat the breakfast.
My bad, sorry.
Krista, sorry.
I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday for the budget workshop.
Thank you, Krista. Christina?
Um, thank you for an awesome meeting. Um, Saturday was so much fun. Uh, Make a Difference Day. Uh, the weather was just right, didn't rain. Um, Tyler, my youngest one, when he found out where we were going, he was actually like really excited about picking garbage up. I didn't know. He was just excited about doing that. So we're probably doing more of that. Um, this also happens, I'm like ninety nine point nine nine percent sure this is my last meeting before. There are now two of us and I may not be joining you in November if that's okay. I don't know, but should you choose to excuse me? But um, anyway, it was an awesome meeting to, to go home and hurrah and, and thank you for everything.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
I was disappointed that we weren't, I wasn't in town for the Make a Difference Day, but appreciate all the volunteers and Regan, Jeff, yeah, Christine and family that represented the city council to clean up that Timberlane Boulevard, which was interesting because I just seen that sign pop up like three or four weeks ago and went, we did? Oh, wait, okay, got it. Um, and thank you for a great meeting. I know I get really emotional about certain things, so I appreciate everyone's patience. It's just that, that's a, um sorry if I got too, too hot headed there, but that's my, my thing. Um, and I, yeah, looking forward to the budget workshop.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The um, Pusit Town Regional Fire Authority had its uh bi-monthly meeting last Wednesday. Um, we started the benefit charge process. So similar to what we're talking about here, the um, RFA has the authority to adjust their um benefit charge for fire services. And so we had a public hearing on that. We didn't receive any comment. Um, but they will take action on setting the new rate at the next fire meeting, so. Um, they also during that meeting authorized the purchase for the chief of an electric uh Ford F one fifty truck. Um, they recognize that they need additional vehicles. Um, they did it in kind of emergency purchase. It was kind of more inside baseball, but basically the, the supply of trucks is going down with the um uh strike, and so they decided to do that and they wanted to buy something moving forward um that would reduce their carbon footprint, but also, you know, be uh reduce the um reliance on gasoline. So they're, they're going to see how this works. And then I talked to Regan about this, that that's something we should look and see how that process goes and how successful they are with this vehicle and look at purchasing electric vehicles for our, our fleet as well going forward, so. Um, and then, yeah, it just came across my um news feed. I have done a lot of traveling in this, around this country, and there's a number of things that communities do, especially northern communities, to kind of celebrate and just kind of get through the winter. Um, there's a community in, in Wyoming that has a contest to basically predict when the stop sign will be buried with snow. Uh, and then there's another community in Alaska where they actually have a giant pole on their frozen river and they take lots. Basically, people drive through and predict to the minute when that ice pole will break. So I was thinking something, you know, would be interesting to have something here in Covington where we you know, predict how much rainfall we're going to get this winter or when the record will be broken. Or if we want to make it more positive, when Jenkins Creek is, the fish barriers are removed, maybe we have lots on when the first fish is seen going under the bridge or something like that. So I just put that out there to, to say communities are finding unique ways to celebrate even when the sun doesn't come up for long periods of time. And I I think it'd be interesting for us to find something like that. And they're getting news coverage of it. So it's just a sign that they have a, a camera on, it gets buried in the snow. That's it. So we could put a rain gauge on top of the roof and just say, are we going to break the record this year? Or how much do you, rain do you think we'll get? So anyway, that's it.
I like the idea of the first fish coming.
First fish, yeah.
Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I, I missed the last meeting. I was on vacation, so that one I missed for a good reason. Um, I appreciate the, the excused absence and um tonight I, I'm apologizing for not being there in person. I came back from vacation with a, a little bug and need to isolate for a few days, so I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to come on Saturday. Um, I want to get clearance from my doctor before I do that. Um, and the mayor's meetup, I had previously volunteered to be there for that. I think I'm probably going to have to cancel out on that for Thursday night. So I apologize. Um, and thank you for letting me join remotely today.
And welcome back, Debbie.
Yeah.
You feel better soon?
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Um, I'm bummed I missed the litter cleanup. I actually like picking up litter as well. It, it really satisfied me because you it looks so much better when you're done. So I'm excited about uh future events and hope my uh schedule aligns. All this talk about the fish and uh stuff reminds me, I don't really give you guys many updates on Rya nine. It's, you know, a lot of it doesn't pertain to Covington. We you know, but it is fascinating. And I think it was in August, we went to visit one of the sites. Uh, the Duwamish River that flows through Seattle is uh twenty years ago was deemed one of the most polluted rivers in the United States. And to see the work that a lot of the organizations are doing, coming together, leveraging grant dollars, really repairing um all of the um catastrophic mess we've made of it. Um, obviously places like Boeing and Port of Seattle are the big funders of uh fixing a lot of these things. Uh, but we did get to see a really great site where they've, it took where an abandoned hotel was and turned it into a safe space for juvenile salmon to like hang out and be safe and be, eat munchy things. And I mean, it's, it's it's really uh important work. And so I'm glad uh Covington is at least there, you know, with their little measly ten thousand dollar a year contribution. Uh, it, you know, it's, it's important stuff, so.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Uh, just a reminder, if you want to be on an SCA committee next year, get your application in. Uh, that is more of a reminder for me because I still haven't gotten mine yet either. Um uh, and I will say that I, uh, I've already decided I will be dropping my uh being on the Affordable Housing Commission. So if any of you would like to join that commission in my place, go for it. If not, what it is. Um, other than that, uh, I hope everyone has a safe Halloween. Uh, I plan to try to be at the Kent Lake trunk or treat. I've been told by my wife, we're going trick or treating. We're not going to a trunk or treat on Halloween, so I will not be at the Kentwood one. I apologize. But other than that, oh, and a personal thing. We all know I, what I've been going through for the last couple of years. Uh, if you are friends with me on Facebook, you've seen it. If not, uh, then you get to hear it now. I got my placement for student teaching. Starting February eleventh, I will be student teaching at Kent Lake High School uh through May twenty sixth, and then the hunt begins, probably begins May, way before May twenty sixth, but it will be going on from there. So uh, that's all I have tonight.
Right. Which class you'll be teaching?
Uh, I will be teaching three classes of world history and one class of psychology uh with uh Peter Fowler, who is a graduate of Kent Lake High School and used to live in this area.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, Make a Difference Day, I am just like everybody else and enjoy picking up garbage. I wish you didn't have to. I do have to say that um we picked up, well, Regan and Christina and I picked up ten bags of garbage and a bunch of other things. And another group went from Timberlane out to two seventy second. They cleaned that. Sunday morning, when I was coming back through, there was another gentleman out there picking up garbage all over again. Because it was all thrown into the, the bushes and I know it was clean Saturday night, so. What a shame. But thank you to everybody who does participate, not just what we did on Saturday, but to all the groups that have adopted the streets and the roads in Covington, including our city staff. Uh, mayor's meetup on Thursday. Um, Jennifer and Joe, thank you. It's uh six thirty to eight at the community's room. And uh, that is all I have. So we'll move into our second public comment period. I will read all this because it makes Joe happy.
It does. It really does.
This is actually not much compared. So speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button and zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six if to unmute if participating by phone. Anybody in the audience wish to address council? Anybody online wishing to address council? With that, this meeting is adjourned at nine twenty four. Thank you all very much.